I'd like to welcome everybody to our Ottawa City Commission Study Session. We'll start with public comments, do we have any?
None today.
Thank you. That'll move us on to items to be placed on the regular City Commission Agenda, which is our minutes from our October 3rd Study Session and our October 5th Regular Meeting. Commissioners, were you able to look through that? And if so, are you okay with moving that on to our regular agenda?
Yes.
All right, that's what we'll do, thank you. That'll move us on to items for presentation and discussion. Item one is a continued discussion of a splash pad. I believe Casey is on Zoom with us and Director Thorpe is coming on up to the seat. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So I did put in front of you the PowerPoint and it is actually going to come up on the screen, so I wanted to make sure we covered all of our bases. And what we did is we went through and kind of listed, gave you a visual of the pros and cons of the splash pads that we're talking about. There are a number of things that drove the pros and cons that we put here. We had conversations with a number of other municipals. We had conversations with Baldwin, Leavenworth, Salina, Garden City, some conversation even with Emporia, still waiting on some more conversation with them. And so we've talked to several municipals after we left our meeting this last time to get a better feel, you know, for what we thought was out there. And that kind of led us to this list of pros and cons that we have here. These pros and cons may, they actually may look like they're somewhat biased, but quite honestly, these are facts. These are facts. And so let's just kind of walk through quickly, first of all, the recycle system. The recycle system, the pros, get a little short. You know, really, the only pro that we saw in the recycle system was the fact that there is a possibility, and quite honestly, it's a kind of a remote possibility, that there's water conservation in that type of system. The cons, there is an increased cost of construction, design, chemical, labor, future replacement of equipment, the daily monitoring and then what that might look like. And then the one that really kind of concerned us the most as we started through this was the increased chance of bacteria growth and the chance of any kind of outbreak at that point in time. And so, as you can see then, as we move to the pass-through, it actually is kind of just the opposite. You know, lower construction design costs, fewer moving parts, no chemicals, less monitoring, consistent water quality. We're passing through this, the same water that we pass through to our customers for their drinking water. And then, of course, the reduced chance of any kind of bacteria growth, because you don't have any stagnant or standing water in this process. The cons, you know, possibly a little bit of increased water demand and a little bit less water recovery. We talk costs and we ran the costs and honestly, you kind of left us with an impossible task, you know, because there's about a million ways you can look at this. And we don't know exactly what our system is going to do, you know. But our splash pad is going to be different and every buddy we talked to, their splash pad was a little bit different. But where we landed, and I'm going to give you the high side of what could happen here. Casey helped run some numbers, we ran some numbers. Our cost per thousand gallons is eighteen dollars and ten cents. We figured if you took, you were running two thousand gallons per hour, six days a week, or six hours a day, seven days a week, for four months, you would run a million three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars through a pass-through system.
Yeah, gallons, Dennis, a million gallons, one point three.
I'm sorry, gallons, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was doing some magical questions, like, what's not a carry zero?
Two thousand gallons per hour, six hours a day, seven days a week, for four months, the total gallons is one million three hundred and forty-four thousand. The cost of that at eighteen dollars and ten cents is twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents for the year. That's for the whole, the whole year, that whole four months at that point in time. I'm going to tell you from the people we talked to, this splash pad will never see that kind of use. It will never run that much. Most of the people that we talked to, and some of them could only give us a blush because they may have had, on the meter that that splash pad was running off of, they may have had an irrigation system running on there too, various other things may have been on that same meter. So they were, they were giving us their best blush. Most of these folks said something around that two thousand dollar mark for the year, not twenty-four thousand. So they're not running nearly as many gallons through these splash pads as what we would be talking in that worst-case scenario. Anybody with me? Tell me what I missed, what you don't understand.
So for my sake and the public's sake, tell me what makes the splash pad run? Because you say if it runs.
All of the splash pads that we talked to were either set up on some sort of timer, but most of them were set up with a push button. One way or another, they can go in, they can start the splash pad with that push button, and then it was set to run for five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever, whatever they decided was right for their splash pad. Once that happens, those splash pads shut off, which is the, which is our big concern with the recycle system. You've got a tank, a holding tank at that point in time, that's going to sit there, let's just say it sits there overnight. It hasn't been run, it's hot, that water gets stagnant, bacteria begins to grow. First kid that comes and hits that button is getting that water out of that stagnant, and it hasn't hit chemical yet, it's not been, you know, it's not been treated. That's our concern with the bacteria growth.
So, I mean, I guess the reason I ask is because, as you mentioned, first of all, it's not going to be on at night, correct?
It would, it could be on at night.
Engaged at night.
If somebody hits the button, yeah, it could be on.
Okay, so it's going to be a 24/7, anybody could use it at any time?
Absolutely, absolutely, until we shut it down in the winter.
Okay.
And you could still put a timer, some sort of control on there, Mayor Crowley, you know, that is kind of like, you know, like your lights or whatever, that it doesn't have power or something in the evenings or whatever, because what's the time of the park? What are the hours of the parks? I think that we'd want to, we'd want to put it around the hours of the park also. But there is some, you know, it's some extra work, but there is some ways to control that. And one thing that Dennis was mentioning about the stagnant water, it is recommended at least two times a day that on a recirculation system, that somebody is out there wet testing, taking chemicals and balancing the chemicals.
So what stops you from having that problem in the pass-through system if you're sitting there for 12 hours without something?
Because you're pulling right out of the, out of our water system, it'd be just like opening your faucet at home. You're pulling right directly out of the water system that you would be drinking when you were using it out of your faucet at home. So it's that same water at that point in time. There's, you know, the chemicals already been added at the plant and you're, you've got that same water that you're using at that point.
You'll put a meter on the splash pad, right?
We will absolutely pull a meter. We want to know, we want to know, just like you guys want to know exactly what, you know, this is going to look like. And, you know, maybe our next effort, and you can see here that we, staff is recommending that we do a pass-through system at least for this first time. You know, we gather some data, you know, maybe our next look at this says, you know, that a recycle system makes sense, but the people that we talked to and the people that they had talked to, everybody that's done a recycle system up to this point, is already trying to abandon that and go back to a pass-through. Because it just simply isn't making sense, you know, for them to do their recycle system.
And this is probably a detail I didn't get into enough earlier, but the recycle system, it doesn't mean that the water that you get from when you open it up in May is the water that's still there when you close it down in September. You know, stuff's getting moved off the pad, evaporation, things like that. So you're still having to buy water, you know, and put back in the system and recharge it daily. So you're not, you know, you're not saving, it's not an apples-to-apples of remove all this water, or, you know, you're only going to use the set amount once. You're still adding water in every, you know, every day to the system.
And the filters on a recycle system have to be backwashed on a consistent basis. And by backwash, what that does is it pushes water back up through, if it's a sand filter, for instance, it pushes water back up through that sand in order to push the debris and all of that back into the sewer system. Again, that's water that goes into the sewer system. This system would likely have a tank, and with the amount that this tank would likely set to get stagnant, there would likely be times that that tank's just going to have to be drained directly to the sewer system. So kind of what Casey is saying and what we found is that although you might use a little more water through a pass-through system, it's probably not significant with what we're seeing, because there is some wasted water, water that goes to the waste systems out of the recycle system too.
I appreciate this PowerPoint presentation. A couple of things, I, on cons for the pass-through system, I mean, there's still going to be a seasonal startup, I mean, we're still going to have, and it's probably not as much, but we're still going to have staff that's going to need to go over there, and I mean, nothing looks as good in August as it's going to look the following May, it just doesn't.
We talked, Sarah, we talked to the folks from Leavenworth this morning, and they are just getting their splash pad built and they, supply chain issues, they didn't have all the amenities, all of the fixtures to go in the system. And one of the things that they told us, they just got it started up and boom, we're winterizing it. Well, it took them all of five or 10 minutes to get it winterized and they were done. They were absolutely done with it. And startup is kind of the same thing, making sure the pump works, making sure everything, you know, everything flows like it should, yeah, it takes a few minutes, but unless you have an issue, which you could with either system.
Well, eventually we will with everything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a, yeah, sorry, Casey, well.
I believe those startup costs are more not for the actual, like, cleaning up the facility, is the pump maintenance of getting the, everything opened up. Because the big thing is, you have all this water and everything that's been in the pipes all, all winter that you have to rebalance and get out. And so with the pass-through, you just pretty much blow out the lines. It's probably pretty much going to be out there, but it's kind of like when you open up your pool for the first time, there's a lot of testing and everything that goes in it to get it balanced chemically before you can have any, anybody in it.
With the recycle system.
I do. And there also, I mean, the reality of it is, is that if somebody is watching, there's also going to be future, I know that in the recycle system, there was listed future replacement of equipment, but the reality of it is, there's future replacement of the equipment regardless of what we, what we build. I mean, there just will be replacement of equipment. I understand that there may be more complex things, but we're not saying that this is, we're building this splash pad and it's forever, here and eternity.
Nothing's perfect, yeah, nothing's perfect. There is no perfect world. The difference is, is you've got one pump likely in a pass-through system, you know, and then your water's going back to the sewer system, whereas in the recycle system, like I said, you've got a holding tank, you've got some sort of filter in there at that point in time, whatever that may be, and then you've got the pump on top of that and just more things, more moving parts, more things to go on. Plus, the building that you got to build at that point in time. A pump house, a small pump house, is something most people won't even recognize is there, quite honestly. And for a recycle system, you're going to, you're going to build a structure to do that. And in case you haven't noticed, I am very biased at this point.
Nope.
You're very informed, either way.
The initial dollars that were, at least were presented to us, I mean, these are considerably different dollars, so I appreciate you bringing the dollars, the dollars to us so that we can have a more informed decision. Was there a pass-through system estimate and cost of?
And cost of?
I mean, there's still water, as Casey put it, I mean, yeah, everything evaporates from night to day.
That's what we were talking about, is the pass-through systems that we, the people that we talked to, we were probably closer, and we actually got the water usage from Baldwin, to be quite honest, and the water usage that we saw and the people that we talked to was closer to that, two thousand dollars worth of water, eighteen dollars and ten cents a thousand. They just did not see a lot of water pass through those. And the one in Baldwin, quite honestly, again, was tied to an irrigation system and a concession stand, you know, right in the center of town there, that is used on a pretty regular basis. So, and they didn't have a way to split that, that water out at that point in time. So, you know, we're actually talking about worst-case scenario with what Baldwin was doing at that point in time. That's just one, but the others were very similar. Everybody we talked to was very similar to that. They just, they don't run all the time, there's not somebody there all the time. And even when they are there, you know, they may not be running all the time. And so the actual water usage is, for what we're talking about, quite honestly, I don't think is really significant.
So, and I may have said it the wrong way, pardon me, did you have a cost estimate for the recycle system on the water cost for a recycle system?
Actually, Sarah, we believe it's very similar. We believe that it's just nearly the same thing, yes. We believe it's, you know, there's probably some reduced costs, but we didn't find anybody that had anything good to say about a recycle system, honestly.
Similar to that two thousand dollar number you talked, okay.
Yes, because there's.
Yeah, similar than the twenty-four thousand dollars, that's what I, I want to make sure that I heard you correctly.
Systems are similar to that two thousand dollar. We ran this worst-case scenario at twenty-four thousand dollars. A scenario that we believe won't ever happen, quite honestly. What was typical, what we typically saw was around that two thousand dollars for the water for season. And like I say, we believe they're very similar simply because in, there again, nobody, nobody measures the waste necessarily, it's what's coming in, and you've got all the other things that Casey just talked about, evaporation, you know, what goes off on those kids on their trunks and everything else, you know. So the impossible task that I said before is really kind of true, you know, giving you exact numbers until we put one in and know, is very hard for us to do. I appreciate that. And all we need is marching orders.
I also want to briefly talk about the fact that, I recognize that we had a conversation about the fact that this may result in the need for more personnel to address this from the Parks Department. And I agree, it certainly might. I guess I'm trying to weigh the difference between twenty-four thousand dollars versus three thousand dollars, and I just rounded that up, and the cost of hiring labor. Because I think that if this is a four-month process and if that person is only solely designated just to watch our one splash pad, that still gives that person, the other person, several months to be utilized in other places in the Parks Department. So just, I don't know that, I know that we have had, Dennis, you and I have had conversations before about the fact that, you know, we may be pretty tight-staffed. And so it may be something to look at, would it be cost-effective to bring staff on to care for part of this, knowing full well that we could utilize them in other manners at other times in their, during the year?
I think we can always talk about the need for personnel. Specifically related to the splash pad, I don't know that that's a conversation that is directly related to that. A piece of that, it could be, certainly it could be a piece of that. I don't think it changes the, what we're talking about as far as, which is the best way to go here. Whether you had more personnel or didn't have more personnel, I still think the pass-through system is the one that makes a lot of sense.
On the personnel thing, also, what's key about the pool is there's always like the pool manager or somebody there that can shut down the pool if something happens. Where this, if something happens and nobody knows about it until, you know, somebody's either sick or, you know, or it notifies the city, I mean, chances are there'll be a post there that says with the, you know, Parks and Rec's phone number on it, if, you know, somebody needs to be notified. But so are you, are you almost looking at trying to have somebody there full-time? Is that what you're asking Commissioner Kayler or?
No.
Okay, because that's where I think it kind of goes into the, the extra staffing of it, was to make sure it's 100% safe and to take liability away from a pass-through system is having somebody there checking it very often to make sure that, you know, some, some child there that, in a diaper or something, didn't have an accident and something get washed in there. So that's where I think kind of some of the personnel thing is, is really trying to monitor that on, and not just plan on people notifying the city when something does happen like that.
I would be willing to bet the social media would fire up at that point in time.
We know, right?
I don't know, you think who's going to take that against you?
I appreciate all the info. I know kind of initially, I think Mayor Crowley had said this, that I was initially, you know, leaning towards the recycle system, just simply, you know, recycle's a nice buzzword as well, but it just sounds really nice, I think, compared to the pass-through. But kind of once you obviously explain how everything is going back into the wastewater system, and then obviously just the public safety of the bacterial growth and water quality that, you know, adults and children and people will be in, I think, like you'd said, the pass-through, to me, makes a lot more sense now than it did originally in terms of that. You know, the lower upfront cost, lower cost to just maintain it annually, I think that seems to me like almost a no-brainer at this point to, for the first one, you know, kind of go that route.
And that's, that's where our research took us. And I appreciate the commission pushing us back, you know, to do, to do more research. You know, honestly, the more we talk to, the more people that we talk to, the more adamant, you know, we became that, you know, really the pass-through system from our perspective was the way to go. And that we felt like that was a fair approach to come back to you on, because you sent us after the information, we got it.
So Commissioner Clayton, I hear you're kind of leaning towards the pass-through. Commissioner Graves, how do you feel?
I had kind of expressed my opinion some last time, but I'm also in favor of the pass-through. I think it recycles still, it gives us that bonus, but just on a larger scale. So I'm also in favor of the pass-through.
Okay. Commissioner Kayler?
Pretty much pass-through for the initial run at it.
I really, really appreciated Casey last week telling us that, because I'm in favor of the pass-through also, and I think that we could, if need be, if we find out that that's the wrong way to go, I think we've saved some money at first and we're able to, you know, change it over maybe to a recycling system next, you know, to correct maybe the wrong decision, but hopefully we, that's not the one we're making. So I think you got, as you asked for earlier, some marching orders that we're all in favor of the pass-through.
So there's no objection if we move forward with this, we get this done?
No objection.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners. And sorry, I forgot to say in public comment, I want to say congratulations, Mr. Neinstedt, on your retirement announcement. So it's been fun working for you and I look forward to the next six months.
You got five months to work for me.
Five, sorry, I miscounted.
Mr. Neinstedt, that was my father.
That was.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, Commissioners, that'll move us on to item two, which is a continued discussion of results of the bid opening for 127 North Elm. Now, obviously, Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore wasn't available today, and I know we had left it last week of, you know, I think it was a 2-2 at that point, a split decision of him making kind of that final decision. So unless anybody has changed their standing on where they were last week, we can certainly just put it off until Mayor Pro Tim Skidmore comes back next week. So, so we wanted to explain until next week.
Sounds fine.
All right, that's what we'll do. All right. Item three is a continued review of our capital improvement plan for 2023 through 2027 for Director Landis.
Thank you. What you have in front of you is an expanded version of last week's conversation as well as a few changes in just the summary detail or the summary spreadsheet form that we gave you. There is an additional sheet in here that I had started with last week about the conversation of, hey, we've had conversations internally and been talking about what are all the other things that eventually need to be done, but we don't know exactly when that's going to happen, we may not even have cost estimates on those. That was included in the packet for you. So as a reminder, where we're at on this process is this would be the last time you would see this version of the five-year CIP before it goes to the Planning Commission this Thursday. It would be on their study session agenda and give them an opportunity to take a look at it. They'll also have an opportunity to take a look at it in November. They would hold a public hearing in December at their regular meeting, and then it would come back to you for your approval after that. But likely there wouldn't be any changes made to it other than, at the Planning Commission level, we want to make sure they understand what the projects are, and then the ask of them is that they find it in compliance with a comprehensive plan. So really, your role in reviewing all of this is to make sure that the things that are on there that you believe are important, the timing looks about right, that we haven't missed anything major, and to ask any questions of us of what those projects might look like or why they're there, what they mean. And as a reminder for the public, and you already know this, is that these things are not set in stone, these are projects to get them, to make sure they're on our radar, the amounts are estimates, the years that are in there are estimates, they can move around as money becomes available. It's important that we identified a lot of these because there are grants, lots of new grants that are available that weren't available in the past. I think that last week, I think that our city clerk let us know there was like 843 grants sitting out there. So not all of them are applicable to us, but certainly there have to be several that are. So it's important that we, you know, make sure that we know kind of where we're at on these and what the importance are. So I guess with that, I, I am, I and your department are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Director Landis on the CIP?
I have, give me just one second, I'm trying to finish this. So when we were discussing bonding and we were discussing auditorium upgrades and things that could be done to the auditorium, those items obviously didn't make it into the bond because of, there were some cost savings to do so. And so I'm wondering if those items that are on the CIP... And so I'm wondering if those items that are on the CIP may need to be modified to include part of kind of the wish list that we had, or the auditorium had for, you know, concession stand upgrade, the orchestra pit, the carpet, the seating, those things, they're not on here, and do they live somewhere else?
Right, now they kind of live in the operating budget as those maintenance items. So, for example, even this one, the kitchen renovation, which is the first one, they've applied for a grant for that. It's not something that we budgeted for, for 2023, but it's something that they will have on their radar if they were to get that grant. We could add those things back, but those are, painting is more of a maintenance improvement item, and we did budget some, we do have a maintenance budget in their annual line.
Seeing, concession stand, orchestra pit, carpet, those are all?
Those are all in the bond issue. The carpet, all of those things were in the amount that we have in the bond issue, so those were, I didn't put those on here because they're already funded, they're already going to take place. Now, you're right, they are, yes, those are in there. Yeah. And so I could add those back in there, because I guess technically they're funded and they would happen next year. So we could do that, just to make sure that they're on the list. It is a communication tool, so, I mean, that is an item we could put on there. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't even think about that, I was thinking, oh, those are done, they're not technically done, there's just, there's a plan for them. Yep, so I'm happy to add those back, we could even just do an improvement line and just kind of add them all in there.
I think you could put it line by line.
Each one that's in there?
Yeah, I mean, if we're putting things in here that, if we're highlighting other things, let's highlight those things.
Okay, sure. Yep, we can certainly do that.
Any other questions, comments?
It's exciting stuff on there, though.
It is exciting, I, this is a really long list, and this wasn't in your last packet, it's an extremely long list, but it is an exciting list of things to know that, one, your staff has sat down and really put some thought into what this, what these other things might be, and I mentioned to you at the last meeting that we really want to start this process of talking about all of these things again, and these things that are on this list, or at least some of them, early in the year, which is only a couple of months away, to start finding out what your priorities are, so that as we start budgeting for '24, we've got a new plan together, and then we're giving you more time to look at these and prioritize them for yourselves, and then being able to forward those on to the Planning Commission, and really tie this process to the budget, so that we don't have any surprises after the fact and wish we would have done something different. So really looking forward to that, but this is an exciting list as well.
So with Melmy's guidance, she's been able to bring order into disorder, and this is what a CIP ought to look like, she's helped refine that. The people that have gone before us have put it together and changed it over the years, but this is what I'm used to, so I appreciate your work on this.
Well, I certainly know, last week we'd received the CIP, but it's really great to have all the additional information that you, you put in this week's agenda, not only for us, but the public to see kind of each one of those projects, and certainly when the Planning Commission gets that information.
After we had sort of worked on it, I wish we'd have that for you last week already, because it is more information on each of the projects.
Tell me, how is the priority determined on, which would be on page 11? I mean, it appears as though there's a 1 through 3 system, but sometimes a 1 through 4, 1 through 5, but sometimes the 1 isn't the 1 getting the next.
You're right, no, you're right, and that's probably something we need to work on internally, that is a criteria in the system that's set up, but the department had, didn't go back in and reprioritize all of those, we really focused on the description, the years, the amounts, making sure everything was pulling together and tying out, because I think some of them are critical, very important and important, or so, I think that's the way that they go, 1, 2, and 3, and then after that, it's like not important and whatever. So, yes, we probably do need to go through it, and that might be part of our process at the top of the year to say, okay, well, how do we want to prioritize these things? Because obviously, that's what we want to be looking for, for funding first, or allocate those budget dollars towards those things first.
Well, because everything on electricity is a 3, and I'm like, well, and they're all, it goes next.
Yeah, 3 is important, I think they're all important, but you're right, I don't know which one comes first.
So what I think this also does, especially for you elected officials, commissioners, is when somebody says, well, why do you have those people, why do you need those dollars, there's not much going on, you can actually, this gives a sense of what it takes to keep the city together, and there never is enough money for the needs, but it at least helps let our citizens know that we are giving thought to those critical items that are, that are planned out several years from now, in addition to the normal day-to-day maintenance.
Any other questions or comments for Director Landis?
This is time.
Anything from us?
I really don't, like I said, we'll add these couple of things, and then we'll take it to the Planning Commission study session. If they were to ask some questions that I really can't answer, we'll come back to you and ask those things and how you'd like to approach those. I don't know that that will happen, but if it, if it were to happen, we would certainly want to come back and get your guidance then.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, I'll move us on to item four, which is a recommendation to add nine properties to our neighborhood revitalization program. Director Hall?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Got a few slides here.
So we have another batch of applications to present to you. So we have nine applications, three of these are residential new builds, six of them are residential remodels. The residential new builds, the rebate amount is 95%. Property tax rebate for 10 years, for a remodel, it's 95% for 5 years. Next slide, please. Here is a map showing the location of the projects. Next slide, please. This first one is a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage home. Next slide. This next one is a new single-family attached home, it says three-bedroom, two-bath, one-car garage, so this is a little misleading. This is actually two attached single-family homes, so it's, you saw the building, it looked like a duplex, but it's two attached single-family homes. This is a fairly common one, built by Van Knight Construction, Van Knight Properties. Nice-looking, nice-looking building. Next slide, please. Another new home, this is a two-bed, two-bath, single-family home. This is a remodel. This one is, there's an existing garage, they're converting it to a family room, and then they're adding a pretty good-sized attached garage to it, significant project, 630 South Ash Street. Next slide. 907 Sixth Street, this is installation of a new detached garage for the driveway. Next slide. So this is actually a residence currently. It doesn't really look very residential on the outside, but it is a residence, and there's some significant changes being made to it, to the interior, at 727 North Poplar Street. Next slide. This project is a kitchen and bathroom model with flooring cabinets, Uvani shower stall, toilet plumbing, electrical, new She-Rock, variety of things, significant project, 721 North Main Street. Next slide. 832 South Olive Street, this is a variety of repairs. I think what you can see here is this is going to really improve this property, significant value, improvement value to this project. Next slide. This is a remodel at 1047 South Locust Street, kind of similar to the previous one, significant improvement to this, this home, a variety of improvements, as you can see. And I think that's the last one. Yes. So, good projects, be happy to take any questions you have and suggestions.
Commissioners, any questions for Director Hall?
Do you know how many this makes this year? We've had in total?
I think 60 is the number. Commissioner Kayler reminded me of that, we met with the committee, and I think we counted about 60.
Including these, it's 60.
Including these, I think it includes the ones we expect by the end of the year, so we're probably going to get a small batch between now and the end of the year.
I thought it was the ones that had already been taken over the clerk's office, so that's maybe not included.
Maybe so.
Yeah, because we had some lengthy.
You might be right about that.
The committee had some lengthy conversations when we met a couple weeks ago, and there's a prosperous conversation about, is it time to possibly look at the rebates and about the percentages, and to see if it's actually doing, if it's, if we can attribute the building to actually neighborhood revitalization, or not directly contribute it to the benefits from, that are realized through neighborhood revitalization. So I think that that's a conversation that we probably should have as a commission sometime soon.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for Director Hall?
Nope.
Would you guys like to look at these again, or are you okay with moving them on to our next agenda?
I'm okay moving.
I've looked at them several times, I'm good with moving.
All right, we're, looks like all of us are in favor of moving them on to our next agenda, Director Hall?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move us on to comments by our city manager.
I have none.
I'll move us on to comments by our city commissioners, Commissioner Clayton?
Oh, so you're here, okay, awesome. Just making sure last week you weren't. So I kind of wanted to just bring up with city attorney Finch, the food and alcohol sales kind of requirement that we had a few weeks ago kind of cast in with doing some research on, around that, and what, I guess Ottawa can do, and then what some next steps would be. So do you feel comfortable?
As we thought, I mean, the research indicates that the county is the one who put the requirement in place for 30% food sales. The county will have to be the one to change. So at this point, the county would have to put the issue back on the ballot, you're seeing that happen in some places here in Kansas. The only other way to change that would be to have the legislature revisit the law in January, and see if they would make some change that would allow for some other different arrangement. The law is uniform, so you may not opt out of it, do the charter ordinance, your own little authority would not apply in a sense that the legislature acted a uniform bill, uniform law that covers all cities evenly. So, two remedies are the county, we'll put it on a ballot, that's not possible this November, around the time, so we're going to have a special election sometime next year, or waiting for the fall election next year. In the interim, I would just want your fifth take action between January and May and the next officer session, try to change that.
Thank you. So I guess my ask would be from the commissioners, if we're comfortable either having a delegate to go to the county commission and speaking at the county commission, having Mr. Neinstadt, Richard, since that's your father, draft a letter on our behalf, that we could approve, obviously, before it is sent to the county commission. If we have a consensus that we voice our consent and our approval, choice, put our name behind the repealing of this, or potentially getting it on the ballot next year.
I, I would be in favor, I mean, I'd be in favor if we could have legal or, or Mr. Neinstadt draw up something, and just, just to feel the county out, I mean, we may send them a letter, and they just say, no, we're out. But at least get it, you know, get it, get it in their heads that with something that's certainly in interest of ours, and to see how they feel, and then see how it goes next year. And I think at this point, it's just a letter, it's just, it's just a request, just to see how, where we stand.
I feel the same, I think that's kind of step one, in my opinion, and then, you know, if we need to look further into how we can make it happen beyond that, if we don't get a favorable response, then, then we worry about that down the road, but I feel like that is step one, sending a letter.
Commissioner Kayler, you okay with that?
Absolutely.
I think it's a, it's a good thing that the folks here in town see that we're certainly, you know, trying to do something for them, it might be beneficial for their business, so.
And then I see in the end, if it does go to a general election, it's everybody making the decision too?
For sure. I'll work with Wayne on that letter for your signature, huh?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work, too.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Commissioner Clayton?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Kayler?
None at this time.
I have one comment, Saturday night, I was coming home, going up to the big bridge, noticed that all of the pole lights on the west side were out. Do you have any update on what might be occurring, fixing, anything else we might be doing with the bridge?
Yes, we do, Commissioner, we've had several comments, requests, first of all, the lights aren't the only issue. We believe when the bridge was redone by the state, that they did do some striping on the bridge, but that striping has disappeared. And so, we do have a plan, it has not been completely solidified, depending on kind of how this all falls together, but on Thursday, probably starting around 10:00 a.m., at very least, we will have that bridge down to one lane. If we can get it put together that we stripe and work on the lights at the same time, we will likely close the bridge completely and detour traffic around that bridge for a period of, what, that day, about five or six hours. And so just depending on how that all falls together, one of those two things will happen, and that's on Thursday.
Thank you. I have no other comments, although I will make a motion that we go into an executive session for a matter of 20 minutes, that will include our legal staff, city manager, and Michelle Wab, our HR director. It will be for engaging in confidential communications with our board's attorney. We will reconvene in here, I'll give you a few minutes to leave, we'll reconvene in here at 10 after 5. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right.